Ladies and gentlemen, I will now call to... I will call the meeting of the Balden Park Planning Commission for November 9th to order. And at this time, I would like, for those who can't stand, please stand for the pleasure of allegiance, and Mr. Rooney, would you please lead us in the pledge?
(Inaudible) 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 (Inaudible)
Roll call, please.
Chair David Elmuz.
Here.
Vice Chair Mario...Mario Maciel Jr.
Here.
Commissioner Edwin Borquez.
Here.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Here.
Commissioner Kevin Rooney.
Here.
Thank you. Um, let's see, at this point, I will now open public communication. Anyone wishing to speak on items not on the agenda may step forward. If you choose to do so, you have three minutes to speak. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication. Uh, we will now go to the, um, agenda items. First item is the approval of the minutes for October 26, 2016. Are there any corrections or additions or changes for the minutes?
Chairman Elmuz, I would ask that those commissioners who were not at that meeting to abstain.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
A second.
And being not here, um, I abstain. And what other commissioner was not here? Let the record show that Commissioner Borquez and myself abstain. Motion passes. Three...
Zero two.
Zero two. Next line up, staff, please.
Honorable Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience. The request before you is a request for consideration for a warehouse facility located in an existing building in the industrial plan development IPD Zone, location 13138 Spring Street. The applicant, ION Technology Inc., case number CP844. The applicant, ION Technology Inc., is requesting approval of a conditional use for a warehouse facility in the industrial zone within an existing building. The surrounding zone designations are all industrial to the north, south, and the east. The city of Irwindale lies to the west. The property is part of an industrial plan development, uh, as the slide shows on the aerial view. Uh, the building will consist of approximately 80% storage, where packages will be stored and later consolidated to ship out. Uh, the proposed business at this location, ION Technology, will not utilize any machinery to operate the business. Uh, special noise sources such as machinery, equipment, tractor trailers are restricted to not exceed a number of decibels, uh, within certain hours, uh, 7:00 to 7:00 p.m., as well as 7:00 p.m. to 7:00 a.m., if they are on site. Uh, staff has reviewed the application and operational characteristics and has determined that with the added conditions of approval, the proposed businesses will not have an adverse, uh, impact on the adjacent properties. Uh, therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution PC1623, entitled "A Request for Consideration for a Warehouse Facility Located in an Existing Building in the Industrial Plan Development IPD Zone pursuant to Table 153050020 in the City's Municipal Code." Location 13138 Spring Street. Applicant, ION Technology Inc., case number CP844. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you very much. At this point, do any commissioners have any questions for staffing at this time? All right. At this point, I'll now open up public communication for anyone wishing to speak on this agenda Seeing none, I now close public communication. Again, reiterate, are there any commissioners wishing to speak on this or have any questions for staffing on this item? Seeing none, I now accept a motion.
I motion.
I have a motion, do I have your second? Any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience. Um, before you is a request by Mr. Chen for a parcel map to subdivide one lot with two existing buildings on it into two lots for industrial condominium purposes, and then one common lot which will serve the parking and vehicular driveway areas. This is actually, um, a copy of the parcel map. As you can see, you've got the building here, a building here, Brooks Drive is it here, and this is the end of the cul-de-sac on Brooks Drive. Um, there is also, which the applicant owns adjacent to this property, a property which is right here, which he can't utilize, although he owns it, however, it is utilized as, um, Los Angeles City Department of Water and Power right of way for their transmission lines. So those will stay as is. There is parking and, um, refuse areas back here, as well as loading zones. Um, the existing buildings have between 18,000...they're about 19,000 square feet of floor area. One building does not have a business license with, um, currently. The other has a business license for warehousing, distribution, and storage. Um, as you know, with parcel maps, we send parcel maps to all the various utility companies in addition to outside agencies such as Los Angeles County Sanitation District, Fire Department, um, oh, Cable Company, et cetera, et cetera. We only receive comments back from LA County Fire, um, and they finally gave us clearance on the parcel map Dakota Public Hearing in August of this year. As you know, the final map needs to address all the items contained in the conditions of approval from any outside agencies, as well as the city's public works department. In addition, we also include, in case anybody forgets to give us comments, um, a general condition of approval that the applicant shall comply with any, um, outside agency conditions of approval or anything like that. Um, staff is recommending that the planning commission open the public hearing and following the public hearing, adopt Resolution PC1622, um, entitled a...entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park, Adopting the Findings of Fact, Approving a Tentative Map, Subdividing One Lot Into Two Lots for Condominium Purposes in Addition to One Common Lot Within the Industrial Zone pursuant to Table 15210 in the City's Municipal Code." The location is 13460 Brooks Drive. The applicant is Wenfu Chen with Home Pan Investments, and the case number is PM1429. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Amy. Are there any questions from commissioners to staff at this point? Hearing none, I now open public communication. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward. Seeing no interest, I now close public communication. And again, are there any questions to staff? Amy, I have one. Correct me if I'm wrong, you indicated that not all of the outside agencies gave the approval for this?
We never received comments back. We send out...we sent out all the letters, um, I believe, to all the utility companies, um, LA County Sanitation, the School District, Verizon, Cable Company, or Cable Company, et cetera. We never get comments back. If we do, we note them in the table that's in the staff report. The only one that we received comments back from was LA County Fire. Um, I did double-check with LA County Sanitation District, because typically we do get comments back from them, but they said, because the buildings are already existing and the sewer infrastructure's already there, they had no comments.
Basically, no news is good news from them.
Yep.
All right. Okay, at this point, um, again, there are no comments from...or questions from commissioners, I will accept a motion. I motion to approve.
I second it.
Do I have any objections? Seeing none, motion passes. Next item, please.
Good evening, Chair, Commissioners, and members of the audience. Um, the request before you is a request for a recommendation to the city council on a mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact and a general plan amendment, zone change, a tentative tract map to subdivide four properties into 48 properties, uh, and a specific plan for the development of a 47-unit, single-family detached gated condominium project and one common lot. The location is 14837 through 14839 Pacific Avenue, assessor's parcel numbers 8438-015-037, 043047, 059065 through 103, 060061, 062, and 105. The applicant, Cal 33 Partners LLC, case numbers AGP118Z555, SP1601, and TM73354. On September 28, 2016, the planning commission heard staff's presentation and opened the public hearing for, um, the subject project. The commission had some concerns and directed staff to work with the applicant. The commission decided to continue the public hearing to October 26, 2016, at which point staff requested additional time, uh, to prepare the staff report and recommended that the planning commission keep public hearing open and continue the item to this evening. If the commission may recall the details of the project, in order to construct this 47-unit development, the applicant is required to change the zone and underlying general plan land use designation to a zone and land use with a higher density. However, in order to change the zone and land use designation, the applicant is also requesting to change the zone and land use of surrounding properties to avoid spot zoning. The other surrounding properties will not have any physical improvements. The general layout of the project has no major significant changes from the prior version or iteration presented to the planning commission. The project is still a 47-unit development with a gated internal drive and loops, um, that loops around the...to provide access to the...to all the units. And, uh, the project-specific plan proposes construction of two-story and three-story detached units. However, changes are proposed to address the planning commission's concerns, which included providing additional guest parking, providing safe vehicular access to and from the project, and providing open space amenities...with amenities. The applicant's changes are as follows. The applicant, uh, as you can see on the PowerPoint, uh, has eliminated a, um, pocket park that was originally located here and shifted the top units down. Let's see the unit numbers now, but, um, shifted those units down to provide, um, parking stalls right here. Uh, in addition to that, they've changed or amended the specific plan to reduce the size of the parking stalls to nine by 18. Instead of 10 by 20, they're now nine by 18. They also included a parking stall at the exit of the project. So in total, they've increased, um, from 14 guest parking stalls to 19 guest parking Now, um, to address the vehicular access, um, we talked to the traffic engineer and, um, they came up with a proposal and are proposing to, uh, restripe, um, Pacific to provide a center median for left turn in and left turn out. Um, however, the left turn out is going to be restricted, um, to indicate with signage that no left turn shall occur on Mondays through Fridays from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and from 4:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. In order to provide additional guest parking, um, as I mentioned prior, the applicant eliminated a pocket park. Uh, the remaining open space, however, have amenities for the residents, which include walking paths with outdoor furniture such as benches, um, and a community herb and vegetable garden that remains at the top part here, um, where the residents can participate if they choose to grow some herbs, vegetables, fruits, whatever, and share amongst them. Um, one thing also to note is, that staff would like to remind the commission, is that the applicant is subject to development impact fees, um, including the Quimby or Parkland In-Lu fee. Now, the Parkland In-Lu fee is, um, when one receives the, um, the city deposits that into a specific account designated for the purchase of new property for the creation of additional Parkland or for the revitalization of existing Parkland. So they are contributing that. Um, and one thing to note is that in the staff report, we did an error on the amount, but also the, um, the quantities in the staff report are, um, considered just approximations. So the Quimby fee is, um, calculated to be approximately $572,676.20 for this project. With the changes, um, to the project, um, staff is in the opinion that the applicant has addressed the planning commission's concerns. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt Resolution PC1620, entitled "The Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Balden Park," recommending that the city council, one, approve the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact; two, adopt the findings of fact and approve the general plan amendment; three, adopt the findings of fact and approve the zone change; four, adopt the findings of fact and approve the specific plan, SP16-01; and five, adopt the findings of fact and approve the tentative tract map, TM73354, to subdivide four lots into 48 properties for a 47-unit, single-family detached gated condominium project and one common lot within the RG Residential Garden and MU2 Mixed Use Two Zones. The location is 14837 through 14839 Pacific Avenue, the assessor's parcel numbers 8438-015-037, 043047, 059065 through 103, 060061, 062, and 105. The applicant, Cal 33 Partners LLC, case numbers AGP118Z555, SP1601, and TM73354. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. At this point, do any members of the planning commissioners have any questions for staff? Okay, hearing none. I now open public communication. For those wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward. You have three minutes to speak. Please state your name and address, please.
Yeah, my name is Jose Molina. Address is 3766 Big Dalton. Uh, I was here last time, and our main concern is parking and, uh, traffic. Uh, already across the street from the house, there's a, I believe, they told me, a 39-unit condos with, uh, 10 guest parkings, and with those condos, we already have, uh, parking problems from two blocks on both sides of Pacific being used up by these condominiums. So I don't know, uh, you figure, you're gonna put 47 more homes, and with, uh, 19 parking spaces, where are all these cars gonna park? I don't see it. They're supposed to...they were supposed to add more parking spaces. They're supposed to add, you suggested, uh, small playground or something for the kids. They didn't do none of that. So, and supposedly, they had the traffic engineer out there checking, uh, peak hours, and he didn't even know there was no parking on, uh, Pacific Avenue. So what kind of checking is he doing? What kind of testings? You know, these people playing around with us? Uh, they need to do their jobs, and they need to make, uh, more adjustments and add more parking spaces. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
My name is Laura Allen. We live at 3791 Millbury Avenue. We've lived in this home for 57 years this month. My husband was born and raised in Balden Park, and he has lived here for 80 years. We have seen many changes in Balden Park in all these years. The latest revised proposal from the builders is another joke. The builders are giving up nothing. They're...they propose to eliminate a common open area and to reduce the width of the parking stalls. They still want to cram 47 homes on these properties. They also propose for the traffic to have Pacific Avenue restriped with a left turn in and a left turn out of this development. This would have the traffic lanes and the traffic driving next to the red curbs on Pacific Avenue. Over the years, many times, bobbed-hill trucks and big vehicles have hit branches from the trees that are in the parkways now. What will happen when these vehicles have to drive next to the curb because of the restriping of these lanes? What will the price of these range of these homes be? All the builders see our dollar signs for all of these homes. They have shown they truly don't care about the people of Balden Park or their concerns. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, members of the planning commission, my name is Jim Powers, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Cal 33 Partners. Uh, we're here to answer any questions that you might have. Um, again, as staff stated, we've increased the guest parking by over 35% from what it was originally. We will be paying Quimby park fees of over half a million dollars. Uh, we'll be paying school fees of over 325,000. And, um, the continuous left turn lane down the middle of Pacific Avenue will benefit the homes across the street that have to turn left into their driveways. It'll benefit the people that are attending the church, uh, allowing them to make a much safer left turn into and out of a church facility, and it will assist with people that are turning left into and out of this development. And again, the times during the heaviest peak hour traffic will be restricted with not allowing left turns in or out. We feel that the existing condo project that everybody has a problem with because of their parking, their CCNRs aren't very strong. They allow their homeowners to fill up their garages with stuff that they own. The CCNRs that are proposed for this development will require them to have two parking, uh, spaces within their garage for their vehicles, and then we'll have the guest parking that was increased over 35%. Um, the traffic study that was done, um, met and exceeded all the requirements, uh, established by the city and by the state, and it shows that even during peak hour times that, um, the impacts of traffic from a traffic standpoint, traffic study standpoint, are less than significant. We realize that the homeowners...
You have 30 seconds.
...see it a little bit different. If you have any questions, uh, our traffic engineer is here, and I'll be happy to answer questions also. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak on this item? Seeing none, I now close public communication. At this point, I will now, again, ask, are there any commissioners, um, do they have any questions, not only to staff, but also to, um, Cal 33?
Chair, I also just wanted to let the commission know that our interim director of public works, Sam Gutierrez, is here, in case you had any questions for him as well.
I was just wondering, um, what is the average bedroom per unit? These units will all be three to four bedrooms.
Again, any more questions? Okay. Seeing none, at this point, now, this is for a recommendation going to the council, correct?
That's correct.
So at this point, I will now accept a motion.
I have a question.
Go ahead.
The common lot area that we're talking about would be the garden that they're proposing up at the north side of the project?
The...the remaining common lots, uh, or common areas are, obviously, the driveway, that's one common, um, but for the use by the residents would be the center court, um, which is a patio, and it's improved with benches in this center courtyard here. Uh, it also provides access to, um, this portion here if it's coming through, you know, all the way down the depth. Um, and then, of course, the, um, the garden, uh, the vegetable garden, herb garden up here on the top, uh, which again is for, uh, common use and anybody that wants to grow
Thank you. Chairman Elmuz. Mr. Borquez, go ahead.
Amy, did you say the assistant in the public works department is here?
The interim public works director, Sam Gutierrez, is here, back there, if you have questions for him.
Will you come up, Sam? My question was if you were satisfied with, um, the changes that were made to this project and also as far as traffic on Pacific, um, the history of the traffic and what, you know, what, um, the...how that's gonna help with this development?
Uh, Chair, Commissioners, and staff, thank you. I did, I had a chance to sit down with the engineer and go over the proposed changes. Uh, we are in agreement with the changes. Uh, we think it'll be a safer, um, situation so that they can make lefts on both sides, uh, in and out, as opposed to right now crossing a, uh, center yellow. Um, I don't...I'm not too familiar with the history of, of Pacific Avenue, but after reviewing the, um, traffic report, uh, the impact is considered to be less than significant. So we are in agreement with the plan. I did review it, and, um, uh, if you have any other questions, I'll be happy to address those.
Again, at this point, um, at this point, I will now make a motion to move this to the city council for...
Right, it, um, certain portions you are approving and certain portions are going to the city council for review. The specific plan, the zone changes, um, what else? to the City Council for review. The specific plan, the zone changes, um, what else goes to the City Council? Amy?
Because portions of the report, portions of the project are required to go to the City Council, we just take everything.
Okay, then the, the whole project will-
Yeah, the whole project would go. Um, the general plan amendment, the zone change, the specific plan and the tentative map. Um, they all just, because it's all one big project, we just prefer to take everything all at once as opposed to, you know, only those that are quote-unquote "required."
So at this point, we're not approving or disapproving the, the project, we're just approving it to go to the City Council, correct?
You are making a recommendation to the City Council. Staff is recommending that the Planning Commission recommend approval. However, should you decide, you could also decide to direct staff to come back with a recommend, with findings for a recommendation of denial.
All right, thank you.
If, if you have a stated concern, that, that can also be passed on through the staff report.
Yes.
So, so you could vote in favor of this, but also state your concerns.
Okay, well, just one of my concerns is, um, for each unit to be three or four bedrooms, there, there might be more than two adults living in there. And with two parking spaces, those, those visitor parkings are gonna be used by the residents all the time. So if they do have someone come and visit, like the resident's concerned, they are gonna park on the street. So, that's just, that's just one of my concerns.
That will be expressed in the staff report that goes forward to City Council.
Again, at this point, I have, I make a motion to forward this recommendation to the City Council. Do I have a second?
I second that.
Do I have any objections?
I object. I, I think this should be going back to staff, um, because the, uh, they haven't satisfactory come through with what we were asking for as far as enough parking spaces. So why are we pushing it forward to the council members when, me personally, I'm not satisfied with the amount of parking that was provided for forty-seven homes. I think they should have eliminated a couple of homes and made parking there instead of taking out the little park area that was originally already there and that I thought was gonna still stay there. So I object.
All right, at this point, I will take a roll call.
Roll call vote.
A roll call vote, please.
Chair David L. Muse.
Yay.
Vice Chair Mario Maciel.
No.
Commissioner Edwin Borkis.
Yes.
Commissioner Edith Flores.
Yes.
Commissioner Kevin Rooney.
No.
Motion passes three-two. And again, this motion is to move, uh, make the recommendation, move it to City Council of the entire packet with the concerns noted from, uh, Commissioner Rooney and Mr. Maciel. Next agenda item, please.
Honorable Chair, Commissioners, members of the audience, before you is a request for a recommendation of approval to the City Council on three items. One, the initial study and mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact for the following items, which are, number two, an amendment to the city's municipal code relating to billboards, and three, a development agreement between the city and bulletin displays to allow six new billboard structures along the San Bernardino Freeway Corridor and an extension to one existing static structure located at Ramona Boulevard and the I-605 Freeway. And you can see from the I, the, the PowerPoint presentation, the existing billboard is over here and then the new ones are proposed along the ten freeway corridor. If we go through, this is the first, um, existing billboard site. It's at the existing, um, mobile service station right at the I-ten freeway and Ramona Boulevard. The next one up here at the top, this is actually a remainder piece of property from the Caltrans widening, which is currently vacant. Um, the one down here, this is the Royal Knight Motel on Garvey Avenue. Excuse me. There's actually no current business licenses at this site. There's currently one in process, but we don't know exactly what it is they're doing there yet. Um, this, this location is the Fitness Nineteen Parking Area where Walmart is. This is Fitness Nineteen. This is a trucking company along the south side of Ramona Boulevard, or, I'm sorry, south side of the ten freeway adjacent to Dalewood Street. And then the last one here is, um, a vacant property to the west of the city yard. City Yard's actually over here on Garvey Avenue. So, this is actually a generalized rendering of what the digital, uh, this is a digital billboard, um, will look like. Um, there is proposed to, along the, um, the support tower to do cladding so it doesn't look like a big pole and then also have the city's logo up here. These are actually, um, cameras which enable remote monitoring in case some of the bulbs go out or the images are, get kinda messed up or things like that. Oops, wrong one. The proposed code amendment, um, is going to include new provisions that allow both digital, digital and static face billboards. Um, there are going to be a maximum, if I recall correctly, six faces along the freeway corridor that will be digital and then the remainder will be static faced. Um, the new billboards will, can have no more than two faces. There will be maximum height levels require, or, it can't be exceeded, um, and also maximum ambient light levels, which will be determined electronically. And then also minimum display times for advertisements on the digital billboards and then transition time between images shall not exceed one second. Additionally, a big part of this is that any new billboard needs to receive Caltrans approval before we can move forward with anything. The development agreement, the develop, well, that, excuse me, also development standard, oh, I've got development standards on there. Um, let's move on to the development agreement. The development agreement pretty much sets out, in addition to the typical legal language, the term of the agreement, and the term of the agreement I have in the staff report, um, twenty-fourty-five, which is twenty-nine years from now. However, this is a thirty-year agreement and we've been working on this for a while. So that should be December of twenty-fourty-six would be when this agreement would expire. There is an annual mitigation fee that will be paid, annual percentage fees that could possibly be paid pursuant to the, um, language in the development agreement. And then also the developer has indicated to the city that he will give us time to have public service announcements for use by the city. And that can, could include promotion of a business, the Baldwin Park Business Association, activities at the park, the five K run, the carnival, things like that. So, oh, there we go. There's the development agreements. So at this point, staff is recommending the Planning Commission open the public hearing and following the public hearing, adopt resolution PC sixteen-twenty-one entitled "A Resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Baldwin Park Recommending that the City Council Approve and Adopt: One, the mitigated negative declaration of environmental impact; Two, an amendment to the city's municipal code relating to development standards for billboard uses; and Three, a development agreement for the construction of said billboards and the extension of an existing static billboard." The locations are, well, the static billboard is located at one-two-six-seven-zero Ramona Boulevard. The other billboard's locations are one-three-four-zero-zero Garvey Avenue, one-four-one Garvey, one-four-one-four-five Garvey Avenue, one-four-two-three-seven Garvey Avenue, one-four-two-three-zero Dalewood Street, one-three-two-three-four Fairgrove Street, and then also Assessor's Parcel Number eight-five-five-six-zero-two-two-nine-oh-five. The applicant is Mark Cudler with Bulletin Displays and the case numbers are AZC one-seventy-nine and DA fifteen-oh-one. And this concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you. At this point, I'll now open public communication. Anyone wishing to speak on this agenda item, please step forward.
Hi, my name is Mark Cudler. I'm with Bulletin Displays. We're at thirty-one-twenty-seven East South Street in Long Beach. And I wanna thank the, uh, Chairman and the Commissioners tonight and the staff for working very hard. We've been working on this project for about a year and a half and it's, uh, a lot of work and you've got a lot of dedicated staff. I'm here to answer any questions, but I'd like to talk about some of the benefits, um, in here. This code is creating a smaller overlay, freeway overlay interstate billboard zone that currently exists. It's taking it from six-sixty down to two-hundred and it's trying to create more benefits for the city. So instead of just relocating signs, it allows now in the development to, to consider park signs to, which we're, we're offering in the development agreement to have your own park signs where we build them and give them to you as part of the compensation, um, revenue, um, the aesthetics of the sign. None of these signs in your city look like this. So we're trying to build with cultured stone and, and make some nice signs. Um, and a lot of PSA advertising, not only on the signs in your community, but to use our other signs to bring businesses that are in other communities into Baldwin Park. Um, we've, um, as Amy mentioned, this is, um, twenty-fourty-six, not, uh, the expiration date of last year. Um, and a, um, a lot of signs have been removed because of the widening. We're replacing a couple of them, but creating a smaller zone and more benefits for the city. We know that other signs have been removed and people have not come forward with their applications. We have. It's taken a long time and I'm here to answer any of your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much. At this point, do any of the Commissioners have any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, we have the speaker.
Hello, my name is Hector Contreras and, um, I'm, I'm here in regards to the signs. At one time, Regency Sign was on my property and I would like to have my sign replaced again. Uh, on, on February of two thousand and fourteen, I had Lamar and a city official from Baldwin Park, uh, come to my property and re-proposed, uh, a, a, a new lit-up sign for my piece of property. And my property's, uh, in a premium spot for the city and for the public and for the ten freeway. And, and the reason I'm here is because I was a pretty good, uh, I was a pretty good person when the first signs were brought to Baldwin Park. And I was an important reason why the city of Baldwin Park has these signs now. It was my discussing with the Regency and the city of Baldwin Park to go right ahead and give some sort of a, uh, one month per sign, kind of a little leeway, just to make a little businessman sense out of it. And I had a sign before and the state took it through eminent domain, but for some reason, mine was the only one took. I think my attorney and the city, uh, saw different on that and, uh, and would I, at some point, I would like to, at, say that I had an offer from Lamar Construction and the proposal of the area you guys are trying to put a sign, uh, i- is right next door to my building, right next door to my property. So, why can't we just put the sign back where it was? At one point, it was supposed to be a certain legal distance from one sign to the other so that the signs could be put in Baldwin Park. And at that time, my sign and the Regency Sign that's right there at the city property, uh, further north of me, um, that was the proper distance. And now you guys are gonna shorten the distance and try to put more signs in there? I honestly believe that the city of Baldwin Park didn't let this man know that my sign existed before and I would like to show him the address and whatnot and let him do fair market on that, see if it's actually beneficial-
You have thirty seconds.
...for both of you to have my sign back.
Thank you, sir.
I got a public hearing from you guys, uh-
Sir?
-some consideration of this saying, "Oh, we are now gonna change and no longer need my sign."
Okay, well, you're, you're three minutes, you're up.
Your time is up, sir. Thank you.
If you could review that again, I'd appreciate it.
Not a problem. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Charlie Contreras and I'm here to talk about why the old location at one-three-three-two-nine Garvey Avenue is better than the two proposed on either side of us. Some things to consider is proximity to the existing sign that's on the city yard. Uh, I don't know if the city follows any, uh, regulation as far as the spacing goes, but however aesthetically, um, the location that is just to the east of the city yard sign is, uh, very close to the city yard sign. And, um, I think it would look impacted having the signs so close together. Um, also, uh, obviously your release with the Regency sign will end before the leases for these new signs would. And having a sign that close to the Regency sign, uh, might prove as a liability to renegotiating your contract with the, the sign on the city property. Uh, also, the lot that they're looking to put that on at the corner of Fairgrove and Baldwin Park, I mean, excuse me, and Garvey Avenue is a rather small lot and it's the skinny end of the lot that they wanna put it on. Um, I would imagine that the sign probably would not hang over the boundaries of the property. However, given the height of the sign, if for any reason, God forbid, the structural integrity of the sign were compromised and the sign did come down, it would fall across most likely, uh, onto or across, uh, Fairgrove Avenue, which may also prove a liability, uh, for the city. Whereas if it was on one-three-three-two-nine Garvey Avenue and the sign ever came down, it would fall entirely on private property and not have any sort of an issue. Uh, also, obviously, there's an economic benefit to, uh, a sign coming to any property. And so I'd like to consider that the, uh, locations that they're considering around us are an empty lot that's used for storage, which, other than just the nature of it sitting there, provides no benefit to the city. And also, the other location is the Royal Knight Motel. And I don't know if any of you guys are really familiar with Garvey Avenue, but the Royal Knight Motel is not the best part of Garvey Avenue. And I would say that that place probably has a negative impact on the surrounding community. Um, so in response to that as well, we've put a tremendous amount of effort into rehabbing our facility. Uh, it's coming along very beautifully. It's a great location. Uh, we keep the spacing even and it has already proven to be a successful location for-
You have thirty seconds.
-or a sign to exist. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, would I, can I retain the balance of my time?
Yes, go ahead.
To Mr. Contreras and his son, I'm, I'm very sorry. Um, this is, uh, business. Um, we have went out and leased land and worked with other really great landlords. And due to state, there is state spacing law. All these signs are properly spaced by city and state law. And that he's asking to stop two of our locations so that he can go on his. Um, he, he said that he had a company Lamar. They never submitted an application. Um, there's, there's issues in getting this contract all the way through and I don't think they want it to go through those issues. Um, I'm sorry that he picked a company that didn't put in an application, but we have. And, um, and, and I feel bad about it because I really enjoy working with my landlords in the community and we've got two great ones. For that lot, one that he said is too small, it's actually two lots there and it will be completely on private land. Um, our locations are just as good as his locations. I'm an expert in the industry and they're, they're, they're all good locations. Um, so I'm happy to answer any of your questions, but we want to go forward with our proposal. Um, and we knew they had a Regency sign. They don't have a state permit anymore. They were compensated for their sign. We brought a proposal with, you know, landlords in the city. We also have bought land in the city, our sister company. So we're invested in the city, not only wanting to do signs and develop revenue for the city through those signs and build them more aesthetic, build park signs for you guys. But we also have bought land that we, um, several locations in the city. Um, and we're, we're very happy to be here and we've obviously been up on Ramona for a long time and I love the city and I'm glad to be back, uh, trying to do another proposal. And we've obviously been up on Ramona for a long time, and I love the city, and I'm glad to be back trying to do another proposal. I'm happy to answer any question.
Thank you.
I would like to know...
Sir, if...
I would like to know if the city of Baldwin Park...
Sir?
Offered by property as a complacency to look at, to consider.
Sir?
Sir, please address the...
If, if this is between some issue...
See, I don't know if my property is even offered...
But at this point, sir, at this point, this is in regards to this item, and this is not the place or the time in regards to your contractual issues or in regards to the signage or whatever company that was, that had your sign on your property. So again, this is not the place or time in regards to that. Thank you.
Thank Baldwin Park.
Any other, anyone else speaking on this item? Saying none, I'm now closed. Public communication. At this point, are there any questions from the Commissioners to staffing? Saying none. I will now take a motion.
Motion, move forward.
Second.
Do I have any objections? Saying none, motion passes 5-0. Next agenda item, please.
Thank you, Chair. This is the, well, one of the first items, which is on the agenda, which I have under staff communications. I'd like to introduce our new planning technician, Mitzi Esquivel. Raise your hand, say hello. Mitzi comes to us, she's a student at Cal Poly Pomona, with majoring in urban and regional planning. So she started this week with us, actually, so, anyway. Wanted to introduce her. And so this is, what you see here is our full planning division staff, so just wanted to let you know about that. The next item on the agenda is personnel and housing commission vacancies. If you know anybody, there are vacancies on those commissions. We're trying to outreach. The city clerk hasn't received any applications, so I told her that I would ask my Commissioners to encourage your friends to submit an application to the city clerk for one of these commissions, particularly our housing commission. If you know a tenant who is over the age of 62, encourage them to apply. There is a vacancy with that specific detail.
Is there a deadline?
Uh, it's rolling right now.
Okay.
She's taking applications, well, anytime. These have been up in notice for several months, and they haven't had any applicants, so please encourage your friends.
What's the name of that commission?
There's the Personnel Commission, and then there's the Housing Commission.
And you said, Amy, they're specifically looking for 62 and over?
For the Housing Commission, one of the vacancies is a tenant, so that would be someone who is not a homeowner, who is age 62 or older.
What if they are a homeowner?
You know what? Just go ahead and submit an application. She really didn't give me the details. All she said is that, "I have vacancies. Please help, please help me. Please promote." So, and you can get, there's applications, I believe, on our city's website, or you can contact Kristi Russell, who is our deputy city clerk. The next item is, I've included in your Planning Commission packet, the Planning Division Monthly Report for September. If you have any questions or anything, you know, I'm happy to answer them. We're busy.
Busy bees.
And then the last item that I have is verbal update on the proposed Irwindale Materials Recovery Facility and Transfer Station. As I said, I keep this on the agenda just as a reminder item. Our attorney is still working with staff, monitoring the litigation, and making sure Irwindale doesn't do any missteps. It is appearing that they're looking to maybe do some things close around the holidays, which, you know, is typical. So you may be, you know, hearing about that at a future meeting, so parts of their agreement and the lawsuit are coming due, so, and they're due round around the holidays, the end of December, so. And that's all I have.
I'd appreciate any text you can give us about the, any meetings or court dates regarding that.
Okay.
Okay, I have a request. Recently, I guess, there has, you may or may not know, there was a incident at the restaurant at Urapan. And it may have been about, maybe about a year ago, maybe a little bit longer, where we approved a special use permit for them in regards to extended hours. If it's possible, I would like to get, review that special use permit and to get information from the police department as far as any activity or any problem activity from that location. And if it's possible, I'd like to have it as soon as possible.
And this is your opinion on Ramona?
Yes.
And how far back would you like us to go? 24, 36 months?
Let's just go, actually, probably just go 12.
12 months?
Yeah. I want to see if this is the tip of the iceberg or if it's been going on for, for a while.
Okay. Okay, we'll work with the police department, and we should be able to have something at our December meeting.
Is it possible to suspend that, or temporarily suspend their extended hours?
Not without a...
Not without a licensed public hearing and giving, giving them the opportunity to, you know, review what evidence is against them and come and speak and all of that.
All right. Let's just go with that, my initial request, okay?
Okay.
All right. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
So I have a second? Man, that was quick. Do I have any objections?
I object.
Who was that? Okay. Minus adjourned.